Then all of a sudden it does something like that.
Silence in the pledge.
Everyone rise for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, if you join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Great, we're moving on to Agenda Item Three. We have a very special presentation tonight from the chorus at Holland Elementary School. Ms. Taddy, your floor is yours, and thank you for coming and bringing to students.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate having you.
Turn around, so I just...
We're gonna head out that way. Thank you.
Come on, Jim, we're heading out. We're going down.
The Ellen elementary school choir did a musical on the thirteenth of March, and Disney's Lion King Kids. They took it in some great scripts, gives us a ninety B with all the music, and we had a good time doing that, so we worked hard, and we are very pleased to bring this to you, so you can see, especially our city council members, what we do in the arts in elementary school. We're gonna do a number now with before this, I want to show you a couple of things. If you notice, all of the children are dressed as villagers, and in this particular show, the villagers are telling the story of Simba, their king, the lion king. And so everybody starts the show off as villagers, and then as the show proceeds, they put on masks or some kind of identification to make them into... This is Scar, those of you who know the Lion King, he's the villain. So why not for him? This is young Simba. What they have in the Disney programs is they have young Simba, and then you're gonna see in just a second, young Simba walks out in the middle of Kuna Matara and turns into the older Simba. So we have young Simba and we have the older Simba. There's also a young Nala and an older Nala. We don't have tonight Mufasa, but I wanted to show you his mask, these masks, and all the costumes, the props, the scenery, they're all done by the parents. And I want everybody with somebody in their family, who may have a prop or a costume or anything, raise your hand and show the people how many parents we have. Okay, so let me see. We are going, we'll go ahead and put you back to where you're supposed to be, and do we have our Tim... There you are, right through me, okay. There's also, I gave the Londoners forty-five seconds to change, but all of these again, these are, these are all costumes that are made by the parents, on the people's altar, and other people that help us out. So we're gonna do just the second part of Kuna Matara, and as you hear me say, this is the point where young Simba goes off the stage and out comes the older Simba, and that's the second half of the show. So we're at the second half of the show right now, as we probably... Okay. We're going to move right along, and one of the things that we're going to do now is we're going to show you a little bit about what the, what the arts mean to elementary school kids. We were very fortunate to have the hometown news do an article about our show, and Sam surprised to send the newspaper thoughts that members of the cast had about why they should have the arts in elementary school, do the performing arts. And we would like to pass that knowledge on to everyone. Can you just step back a second, because I got Marie, I'm gonna bring you towards, and there's Keith. Oh, okay, Brody, and you know what, this, this please, I needed Nora, do you have another? Hold on, could you get me my pink, my pink? I'm gonna let, we had the wrong one here, I'm so sorry. So while I am waiting, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that these kids are fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. If you're in fourth grade, raise your hand. If you're in fifth grade, raise your hand. If you're in sixth grade, raise your hand. So we think we have that, and we're hoping that next year, we're gonna be working with this out, and we'll find another show to do, okay? Okay. We're going to let Marie, she's gonna start off in reading what she told the newspaper. The newspaper picked these three out to put in the page, so go ahead, Marie.
I think having a plan like this every year is a great opportunity to know about being a part of the theater world, and all that my school experience will not be the same without this experience.
And?
Keep making drama programs in the elementary school is important, because so many times it's hard for kids to make friends, and drama forces them to get to know each other.
I think we should keep letting school going, so they can bring out the good in children and make them happy, and people watching love them.
I would like to just join in in the thanks, and first of all, Mayor Frankantino and the Satellite Beach City Council, the Satellite Beach City Council, thank you so much for inviting the children here, it makes us feel like we're important, right? And we are, and all the principal, the thousands of people. And all our parents, would you raise your hand if you're a parent in here? Children of the arts, all children of the arts in this county, she's worked forever, and she's my dearest, dearest friend, and just drives me into these wonderful ones. And we'd like to now do the finale.
Thank you for listening, Arden. We hope you've enjoyed our favorite story of the young lion and the king. Under Simba's rule, the Delta Valley was restored, and the circle of life continues.
Thank you, children, thank you so much, students, for participating tonight, and all the time you spent getting ready to the school. Holland, thank you for being such great partners in our community. Parents, thank you for taking time out with your kids. It's incredibly important in our town, we've always been a town, that kids were the main part of our town. So thank you all very, very much for participating, and thank you for coming.
I wouldn't let you, I can tell you. If you keep everybody quiet, we get out of here.
There, Eminem, man. Thank you.
No problem. I know you don't have it.
Yeah, jeez.
I tried to pawn him off on you, but he said no.
We're leaving to go to Hawaii on the nineteenth, Barb has already bought two big bags for the airplane ride, so I'll be like wired up by the time we get there. They're my downfall. As soon as the bags open, they're gone. That's the problem.
Thank you.
Abby, everybody left, there's not gonna be anybody here for...
Not at all. You ready, Mark?
Yeah.
Mindy?
Thank you for that.
Okay. We'll move on to the second part of Agenda Item Three, and that's a presentation of a proclamation to St. John's Water River Management District recognizing April as Water Conservation Month. Dr. Breimer, Mark, would you have the honors, please? I'd like to take an opportunity to read that, and then give you a copy of it. Whereas water is the basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, water management districts, and the city of Satellite Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas the city of Satellite Beach and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are the most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens regarding how they can save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Satellite Beach has always encouraged and supported conservation through various educational programs and special events, and every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, and every business, industry, school, and citizen can help saving water, and thus promote safe, safe and healthy economies and communities. Whereas the city of Satellite Beach is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing safe water measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. Now, on the behalf of Mayor Frankantino of the city of Satellite Beach, Peraloa County, Florida, he does hereby complain, complain, proclaim...
Well, he doesn't like that.
That was a slip, honestly, it was. He's gonna proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month, and he assigned this as a proclamation of the Seal City of Satellite Beach on this day, the third day of April two thousand and nineteen, and I'd like to give you an official copy of that.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, and as always, we'd like to hear any, any information, or anything you'd like to share with our community while you're here.
I was really gonna hand it up for the kids, but they're all... Well, I'll tell you what I was gonna say to the children, I wanted to look out and say, wow, look at all of our future water leaders, because we could possibly have future researchers, scientists, geologists, hydrogeologists, engineers, all in our audience tonight, because every drop counts, and we all can save a drop of water every day. Thank you so much for having me, thank you, City Council, for your support, thank you for your continual support. We know we all love our lagoon, and we are all taking proactive steps to make sure we have enough water for the future.
Abby, we've always been very close to you, and we hope to continue that.
Absolutely.
Very great relationship over the years, and we're just glad to have you.
Absolutely, anytime.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, citizens' comments, again for non-agenda items. I'll take citizens of Satellite Beach City Limits first, and the mic is open. Yes, ma'am?
Do you need my address?
Your name.
Okay. I'm here, oh, well, thank you for all your time and effort, so, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to ask council to address the enforcement of B O C C ordinance fourteen sixty, no dogs allowed on the beach except for service dogs. A permanent and viable solution for enforcing the law is very much needed for the health, safety, and well-being of everyone, and the enjoyment of the beach for everyone. There must be a way to deter the blatant disregard of this law. I bring this matter to your attention in hopes it gains your support and a solution for keeping Satellite Beach residents safe and visitors safe. That's it.
Could you please state your name?
Diane Douglas.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it very much.
May I ask a question? Diane, where are you seeing these, mostly like what beach part? Is it all of the beach, or, you know, certain areas?
Yeah, I'm at Pelican Beach Park, and I've been walking all the way down to Indian Harbor. It's, it's gotten worse in the past few months, so, yeah.
Okay. We'll get somebody out there and start, and start getting that done, so. I just, sometimes it's better if we could focus on one particular area, but we'll get, we'll get out there.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome.
Okay, mic's open?
Ron Giugudis, Satellite Beach. I wasn't even gonna talk about the dogs on the beach, but I live on the beach, and our dog got ticketed, and I've talked about it in the past, and it has been going on for a long time, and there's no enforcement out there, and it's been said in the past, and it's on record in regards to dogs on the beach. I'm not gonna go there, do the research in the past, and I'm gonna say one thing, I have stepped in it, and it is disgusting, so I'm gonna let it go right now, that's not my subject point. My whole subject point is, right now, is I'm looking at the fact that earlier today at the CRA meeting that was held, there was a facade grant passed. Am I correct on that?
Yes, there was.
Okay, are you guys gonna rule on that tonight?
We ruled on it at our CRA meeting.
At the CRA meeting?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be brought forward to the council?
No, CRA.
Okay, that's fine. I've got a point of contention there, and I'm gonna make it nice and short. Ocean Street has had issues with stormwater there, and we've been told that we have not had the funds nor the capability to take care of things, nor do we have the funds to take care of Magellan walkover, to put recycling or anything there, and yet we have a facade grant capability for another business. That's your choice, but that kind of blows my mind as far as not taking care of things when on Ocean Street, there have been neighbors of mine who have had issues going on with high water, and I can bring that issue up for myself and for Dale Abrams, but I'm gonna discount that, it's your time to research that. Additionally, what I want to discuss is, we had, we had a committee last year as far as budgeting is concerned, and the budgeting was concerned about what if Amendment One passes? Amendment One did not pass. Our millage rate went up, and we as shareholders of the community, all residents here pay a price, including renters, because their prices will go up based on the millage rate. Now, we additionally borrowed, or we had a line of credit come up during that time period from, let's say, July through October, I believe there was the city that secured a line of credit, and then additionally, we had cost overruns in various projects that were in the past, and I just want that information brought forward of what those costs were. I want to know, and I'm putting it officially on record, I want to know the exact figure of the line of credit, the cost overruns for, I believe it is, not Jackson, it's Roosevelt, and I believe we had cost overruns on...
The Civic Center.
Hold. The Civic Center is true, and then the pond that we were digging for trying to comply with certain, how shall we say, issues with the lagoon. I want that on the record the next meeting, that these issues be brought out and presented to the citizens. If it involves a newsletter, fine, and then my last issue is that I'm requesting in regards to Councilman Breimer, he does not have to respond to me, you do not have to respond to me, and I'm addressing the mayor. Mr. Mayor, he does not have to address me, but two meetings ago, there was gonna be a follow-up on his response to some of the issues related to water here in the city. It is not gonna address, I'm simply asking the question, and I believe he has the capability of not to respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mic still open?
Good evening, council, Dale Abrams, Satellite Beach, I live in the CRA. Everybody looks great tonight, like all the ties. Is it possible to get the sound system working properly during the Sustainability Board meeting, where I could not hear Nick Sanzone, all the people on the DOS, I could hear them, but Nick Sanzone, I could not hear? I don't know if you guys are still having problems with this table over here, but there are lots of people out there that do watch these videos, and we want to be able to hear them. The other thing is, is that, oh, I've been going to these council meetings since probably twenty-ten and other meetings, and, I don't know, it's just like really casual at this meeting. I mean, they let anybody speak, they don't say citizens who want to comment, non-citizens, they just let people come up and speak, and there doesn't seem to be the parliamentary procedures that are going on like in some of the other boards, so you might want to take a look at that, as far as that's concerned. And I do have to say that, I don't know what you're doing with Magellan, I really don't. I mean, it's like, it's like the lost puppy. It's, you know, we don't have the recycling bins down there, it's, it's really dirty down there, and, I don't know, are we forgotten? Do we not matter? I know you just put some receptacles in at De Soto, okay, and that seems to be working okay. I know you got them up at Pelican Park, I think you got them, I don't know if you have them down at Crotty yet, you might, but you need to take a look at that.
Could you meet us out there to tell us what the issues that you see are?
In Magellan?
Yeah. Would you, would you mind just doing that for, because we, I've sent public works out there, and I think they're trying to figure out what problems you see, so would you mind doing that?
We've got a blue rain barrel as a garbage can, we have no recycling entity down there. I know...
Other than the recycling, when you say it's dirty, like what do you mean?
It's just leaves all over the place, and it just looks unkept.
It needs to be swept up, okay.
Okay? I mean, I know you guys finally trimmed the sea grapes not too long ago, and that was great, but it, it just...
It just needs cleaned up, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, there's more that we wanted to do to Magellan, but, you know, that didn't happen. So, anyway, and then my next question is, what are we doing with the fire department property after we build the two and a half million dollar new station? And that's it, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Citizens? Public comment for citizens is open? Okay, hear and know more from citizens, non-citizens, on non-agenda item.
Good evening, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, I have a few concerns. So, as you guys know, my home in South Patrick Shores is on top of a dump, finding all kinds of military stuff, and, you know, what's this got to do with Satellite Beach? Well, I'm here tonight to tell you my concern of how it relates to Satellite Beach. I've been doing a lot of research, and I've been on the Air Force historical documents, and I've been reading all of the reports, the cleanup reports, and I just spent the last hour crying, because it's scary. Okay? So I'm gonna explain a few things. So on Patrick Air Force Base, historically, there was ponds and retention areas and connectors between them, and most of them led to the Banana River, and they had a number of outfalls to the Banana River. Some of these were from chemical disposal areas on base with trenches to the outfall to Banana River, some of them were from retention areas off of the dumps. So, for example, the most contaminated dump was the one right on the other side of Panita Causeway, which the hypothesis is the reason for the Hodgkins back in ninety-one and caused the, had that investigation. So that particular retention pond, when you have contaminants that are above health limits in the ground, and then when you test the retention pound, the retention areas, add a few zeros to it, so this is very concerning, and that's going in the Banana River, and nobody is testing the Banana River for contaminants. And that doesn't stay up in South Patrick Shores, and that doesn't stay off of Patrick Air Force Base, the river moves, the contaminants and the survival canal open up, it's open to Banana River. When we have a storm like Hurricane Irma or Hurricane Matthew, it disturbs the area which is a, an area that has land use controls, do not disturb, whoop, the weather disturbs it, and that influxes into the Banana River. There's no contamination testing in the Banana River, so that's my first point. The second point is that from these drainage canals, there was a drainage channel on the EPA Epic Study that traveled down the center of the barrier island and ended at Satellite High School, and that carried the contaminants from the base down the barrier island, and we have quite a few students who have had cancer at Satellite High School, and some of those students don't even live beachside. And I'm reading about Franklin Schools up in... And I'm reading about Franklin Schools up in, I think, Pennsylvania, where they have vinyl chloride and PCE, TCE, coming up through vapor intrusion through the school. And that vapor intrusion into the school. Now vinyl chloride is a Class A carcinogen. So I'm willing you guys to know this. And you have the PUD III, and that channel, that drainage channel that is on that Epic Study, comes right down through that property. And you have an opportunity, it's clear right now, to do testing, to coordinate with the EPA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm 32937, but the Indian Harbor side of the fence. Hi. Good evening. I heard you here from work today, because I learned something on Saturday, and I wanted to follow up with y'all. I hadn't talked to a lot of you about this, because people weren't here. It means a lot to me. We spoke just a moment ago, or listened about the drainage canal to Satellite High School. I'd been hearing about a child, and I spoke of her before, in 10th grade, the singer, the theater student, theater student, I'm trying not to cry, at Satellite. Okay. I coached her at cheerleading. I've known her name now. She passed away Saturday. I would like to say this, number five, is because we are more than five that care. I would like to say to Kayla Flower, you're missed, and we will not forget. She said, please don't forget me. She loves glitter. Pink is her favorite color. I don't know when the services are, but if the city could please send something, and then also please some water cleanliness filters in her name to the school would be great. The Kayla Flower Water Filtration Donation. I'm asking for it. Enough kids have died at that school, please. There have been 56 deaths since they started tracking them of Satellite alumni. That's 57 now, I'm sorry. I want to donate the rest of my time to just stand here till that thing beeps, and her memory as a moment of silence, if I'm allowed, sir, mayor. Thank you.
We have the podium.
Okay, Kayla, this is for you, baby. Thank you.
Thank you. Podium still open for, on citizens? Here and no further. Closed, citizens' comments. Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yep.
Have you all contacted the school board to see if they're willing to put in the water filters at Satellite High School?
Can I answer?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking you.
Thank you. The last I heard from Kennedy, who's our representative, is that they feel that the water is safe, because it's slightly below limits. But in Minnesota, those limits are lower than the limits we are saying we're safe with. Obviously, we're not. Please help. Thank you.
What are the approximate costs of the water filters? Do you have an idea?
I would like to throw that to a person sitting there at the committee.
Stella?
I can give you a proposal. I have a few companies that I work with. If you guys would like, I can send you that proposal.
Well, I can't speak necessarily for the council, but this would definitely be a crowdfunding source.
Each one is about a little over $1,000, depending, but you're going to have to put it on the mountain, you're going to have to put it in the kitchen to ensure the safety of the children.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I add something?
No, it's closed. Is it on the filtration? I'll give you a one minute. Stand up, please, and just say it real quick.
Yes, thank you. Both at the state level and at the federal level, there's legislation going through, firing schools that I think is before 1975, and that all require filtration on all of their valves. It's going through both state legislation here in Florida, and also in the state.
Thank you.
Do you know which one that is?
We know about?
Sandra, can you send me the bill number? If you know what it is? Because I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I haven't heard about that.
Thank you very much for your input.
Well, I don't.
And we'll, if you please send that information, we'll act on it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, citizens. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, City Council Comments. Joe, do you like to start?
I have nothing.
Mark?
Same.
This past week, we went to Tallahassee and pounded the pavement on the bills that we do know about, directly affecting our city. And I can tell you that the air of the state and our state legislatures is definitely anti-city. They're currently trying to pass legislation that will not allow any city to regulate vacation rentals, especially for those on the beach. You might want to be really concerned about that. We have, we are, we have a grandfather clause that protects us. So vacation rentals are not allowed on the west side of A1A. That means short-term rentals. We're not talking about long-term rentals. We're talking about short-term rentals. And currently, that protects us from being able to keep our city small and not having a lot of people coming and going on a regular basis. That will go away. So if you guys do have concerns about, you know, knowing who your neighbors are going to be, and if it's going to be rotating out every other day, every three days, I would suggest emailing and contacting your state legislatures. It's very largely funded by Airbnb. The other problem is, they don't believe that single-use plastics are a problem. Now, I'm not one for bans, but I do recognize the fact that it is an issue. They want to do a study to find out if, you know, straws can possibly be an issue. And I think most of us in here can probably contend that you can walk down any road and pick up 50 straws easily. I do every time I run the causeway. So I think it's important that we really let our state legislatures understand that Satellite Beach is different than Indian Harbor Beach. Melbourne Beach is different than Satellite Beach. Melbourne is different. Cocoa Beach is different. We're all different, and we need to be able to run our cities the way that our residents want. And they don't think so. They think we're all the same. So with that said, it was good for the most part, but very big learning experience for myself, because there are thousands and thousands of bills that run through these committees, and it's quite impossible to even try to follow them, because you have the House side and the Senate side, and they're all different. We did our best. I think we did pretty good. But other than that, that was it.
Mindy covered it pretty well.
We had the largest contingent in the state of Florida came from the Space Coast area. We actually had two teams of people traveling, and I was leading a different group of people than Mindy and Courtney were with. But, you know, they need to hear it from you in Tallahassee, because they're not listening to us. You could have a vacation rental next to you that we won't be able to prohibit when our ordinance goes away, and there's a bill right now that's going to remove those ordinances. So you don't know who's going to be next door. It could be a group of people that work in this area, there are eight or 10 people, and there could be two or three pedophiles, and we would have no way of knowing that they're living next door to your children. And there's no way we could prevent it. We can't do anything. So these are some of the things that are going on.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for going up there. All three of you, thank you. Okay. This time, I'd like to congratulate my city manager. I think she does an incredible job. She has been awarded the Charlie Corbell Conservation Award. She will be receiving that on April 14th. And congratulations, and thank you for your effort. Great award. On the 14th, 9th, at the Bevard Zoo. Okay, any further? Thank you. City Attorney?
I have one item.
Okay.
I was contacted by an attorney that was having a closing on a piece of property in Melbourne. The reason it came up is because the city has, and we discussed this before, the council had authorized a foreclosure on the property on Lee Avenue that is in decrepit state. Apparently, the lien showed up for the code enforcement on the property in Melbourne, and they're asking for the council to release the lien as it relates only to that property in Melbourne for that particular closing.
That's the house. I don't, but I, we've talked on it.
So basically, what they're asking for is a partial release, so they can close on the property on Vassar Street in Melbourne. The lien will not be affected on the property here. So depending upon how that proceeds, I know that they've contacted the city about addressing the lien on the Lee Avenue property, but this is solely for the release of the partial release, for the release of the lien as it relates solely to that piece of property.
How can we protect ourselves? Or isn't that an issue at this time? I mean, Lee Avenue, how long has it been we've been trying to get?
About 12 years.
To have something done there. Can we attach something to this on a timeframe that that house needs to be down?
Well, that's a, that's a different issue. The council's authorized me to foreclose on that property. There was a, there was a potential, potential issue with how the lien was originally recorded. So in about a month or a month and a half, I can file the foreclosure. So the city's protected, the lien, the city's lien is protected as that piece of property.
For that piece of property on Lee?
On Lee.
So we're okay there. So, Sunny, how does it, how does, does it automatically get attached to all their pieces of property?
Correct.
That they own?
Correct.
Whether it's in our city?
Correct.
Or not? How does it really mean the ultimate to me? And let me state this, so it's record. He did contact me. I did talk to him. I actually told him to contact Courtney and John on it. He called me back a second time, but Jim, I talked to you and didn't return the call. Again, I directed him to you. My real thing is Lee. I don't know if that Melbourne piece, I don't want it to muddy the water, and it's another 12 years that building sits there. So I don't know if this releasing it, the Melbourne piece, helps us along with this particular piece?
It doesn't, it doesn't really do anything. The issue is, the lien attaches to all of the properties that they own, or he owns.
Can I?
No, sir.
Can I?
No, sir. Sir, now, you'll have a chance on this. I'm going to open it for public. Thank you.
I would like to say, you know, we've been working on this for 12 years. We had code enforcement on this thing. I'm not willing to do anything other than proceed forward with foreclosure on Lee Avenue and keep whatever else we have tied up, because I'm not in favor of releasing anything right now. This could have been handled a long time ago, and it was delayed and delayed and delayed. And we've got attorney costs here. We've got a lot of staff time involved in this, and I'm not, until Lee Avenue is formally ours, and it's foreclosed, and it's ours, then I'll be willing to release anything. I'm not willing to release anything right now.
My thing is, is what's the outcome we want for this? That's what I'm looking at. I want to see that particular dwelling gone. By not releasing it, does it affect the dwelling? If it doesn't, and it doesn't matter one way or the other?
Then release it.
Then release it, and just get it out of our mind. And I want to make sure we pursue as quickly as we can, so it doesn't drag on any farther, the Lee Avenue piece of property. I mean, 11 years or whatever, it's still there, and it needs to be taken care of. So, one way or the other, if we're not getting any more monetary value out of releasing or not releasing the Melbourne property, then my thing is, is just, it's another thing we don't have to worry about, and we make sure that this piece of property here, that we get either A, our funds out of it, and get it knocked down. And if it's foreclosure, Jim, what's the date this is going to be finalized? You said about a month and a half?
No. No, I said I can file it in a month and a half.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why would we want to release it now?
I'm not releasing that. That piece of property in Melbourne has nothing to do with our piece of property here. We gain nothing more monetarily out of it. So, you know, that's my only thing.
The only fortunate thing about it being attached is it did force them to actually finally contact us after 12 years to get something done. I have to say that.
Okay.
So why would we want to? I mean, when it took 12 years for us to get these people to respond to us, now they're looking for us to release something so that they can conveniently do what they need to do. And I'm sorry, I just don't feel that's the way we should be doing business.
I just don't see how the Melbourne property, one way or the other, is going to speed up the process of getting that house, one way or the other.
Somebody can make a motion, do whatever they want.
Anyway, we're still in a conversation stage here, so...
What, Beetle, or how much did they owe, or John, how much is the lien for? Again, it was like 20 grand or something like that?
300.
300 and something thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, yeah, it's, it's a lot of money. And there's a house that, that, you know, is, I mean, I can take that, show the pictures of it. I mean, if you don't know the piece of property on Lee, it's in pretty poor shape, and, you know, we can't do anything about it other than have these liens. And the purpose of them is to make the owner of the property uncomfortable enough so that they do something with it. And I, I really feel bad saying this, but I agree with Dominic, that I think that any pressure that we can put on to make sure that this property is taken care of is, you know, I mean...
Let me just make sure everybody has time here. I'm talking for now. Joe, do you have anything to say? So, direction?
I'm with, you know, council, either councils, I guess, based on what council's saying, there's a couple of other options. I mean, I just need to be able to communicate to the attorney whether or not the council's going to agree to the partial release of the lien. And if not, is there any communication that council wants to give me, or direction to give me to have further conversations with the attorney?
I'll make a motion to not release the lien, and I will give you the opportunity to come back with something else, but I'm not willing to release the lien right now. So I'll make a motion not to release the lien unless you can come back with something else in the future that's going to be more palatable to me.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro.
I've got a question.
Let me just...
Can I answer?
Do I have a second?
Can we open up public comment before the second?
You can bring back another motion. I need a motion here. I need a second. If I don't have a second, then this motion dies. We'll continue the conversation.
Can I second and modify? I can't do anything.
You can put a note to it. So I need a second so we can continue with this motion, or the motion's going to die. Do I have a second? Here and no second. The motion will die for the time being. Additional comments?
Just a question, Jim. Just to clarify from my standpoint, the maximum amount of leverage we have at this point as a city, as Satellite Beach, would be to keep things as they are. Is that, is that the correct assumption?
That's correct.
So if anything less than that would be giving up some of our leverage?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's all. Okay.
Can you explain that a little more?
Well, what I'm saying is, is we have more influence, I'm trying to play legal legal here. We have more control, influence, movement forward of our processes by leaving things the way they are versus breaking things off.
Correct.
We do? Okay.
So I'll make a motion again to not release the lien. I'm making a motion to not release the lien at this point in time.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rosicky. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on this agenda item, not agenda item on this item. Sir, if you'd like to take the mic, please state your name, and you have the three minutes.
I want to certainly thank the council for getting us on, for Jim and John getting us an opportunity to speak. This is something that has bothered us considerably, and we greatly apologize for having...
I need you to state your name.
I'm sorry. Ed Strava, E.S.T.R.A.V.A., S.T.R.A.V.A. And we are in communications with the various ones of you, and just really appreciate what Jim Beetle and John Stone have done. And we are in complete agreement to try to make this thing work as quickly as possible, which we've gotten the suggestion that having that property torn down post haste, in fact, in as few days as we can do it, virtually almost imminently. And we've been collecting, getting some estimates, had some advice provided. And indeed, I think this could happen almost instantaneously. What my wife and I are trying to do very much is not have to go into foreclosure and not have to get it into morass of legal conundrums and delays. conundrums and delays and so forth that might possibly exist. We aren't sure quite how this all came about without putting any fine points on it. It is certainly an issue that we regret having, you know, circumstances that occurred, some of which were family issues, some of which were health issues, some of which were retirement, financial exigencies and so forth. And I'm getting over what my wife actually has even now. But you folks have certainly been patient. And I tell you what, John and Jim have given good input and good suggestions that we feel like we are completely behind to eliminate that problem for all of us. There's no advantage whatsoever. I'm not sure, and I'd need to really go back and look to see quite how we stumbled into the current situation. If, excuse me, I would say we're on the same page because we have no desire whatsoever to have it continue under any circumstances for your sakes and other cities' sakes and our sakes. So with that, I'm just going to say we do appreciate the time and attention that you folks have given it. We apologize profusely. We want to be in compliance. And the suggestions have all been, I think, very constructive. I just don't see any, personally, any reason whatsoever for delays.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Are you the owner of the property?
I almost hesitate to say yes, but I am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comment on it? John?
Concur to this 135 Maple. Mentioned $300,000. From what I'm hearing described, I doubt that you'll get that for the property. So that would mean, if I'm correct, Jim, that possibly the city would also dip into the pot when the other property sold. If that's the way the lien works, I don't know. But anyway, I kind of like keeping the pressure on anyway.
Thank you.
Ron Jurgutis, Satellite Beach. Aging matters. I don't want comments like that, but aging does matter and things happen. And it could happen to anybody sitting right here, just like that, just like that. It could happen. And we need to understand that. What I must say about this item, how many times has it been presented in public meetings that this was an issue? I remember one case where there was an easement about a seawall and whatnot. And I remember another case over the years on Beachside where a property was destroyed and there was some form of meeting of the minds where the, how shall I say it, the fines were reduced. I don't know the brevity of this case. I don't even know where the property is. I didn't even hear a description of where this property is. It was just brought up under the attorney's report. And I hear a councilman's comment, I should know where it's at. Well, I believe in a carbon footprint, contrary to many beliefs. Why should I be driving around town to know where that's at? It should be presented right here, right now, where this property is located. And leverage against a citizen? I, right now, I don't have all the facts. And I apologize for that. But should I be apologizing for not having the facts when all the facts are not presented to me? And then I can look at public notices where they go, well, we've got these fines and these fines and these fines going after somebody. It's this boundary, this service lot and whatnot. Let's bring it out to the open and let's work with our citizens. I don't know the outcome here. I'm not a lawyer. But it could happen. Health can happen to anybody just like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Closed this comment portion of it. Back to council? No, ma'am, I didn't. I'm sorry. So I closed it. Thank you. It's closed. I'm sorry, I didn't see. I closed it. It's a city matter. Sorry. Jim, can you give us a little history? How long has this been going on? Ma'am, I didn't see. I'm sorry. I closed the comment portion to the, no, ma'am. Thank you. I'm sorry. I did not see it. I closed it for the citizens. It's a city matter. Thank you. Jim, please give us a little more history and the property's address, just for the records.
Okay, it's 375 Lee Avenue. The original code proceedings were back in 2008. And the property, I mean, there was a code enforcement hearing. The owner of the property was provided notice of the hearing. The board entered an order requiring the property to come into compliance. Nothing's been done with the property, my understanding, other than maybe something minor right when the hearing occurred. And so nothing's happened to correct the deficiencies and the property's actually deteriorated. My understanding is, is that at some point in time during this period, somebody was found dead in the house, committed suicide in the property, and nothing was done then. So basically, this property's just been sitting there for about 11 years.
Our building department had to secure the property ourselves because there was no response from the owner. So this, these are the things that, you know, we've had to address.
It's been going on for, this is not just like all of a sudden it came up tonight. This has been going on. So basically, if we didn't do anything tonight, then the legal process would basically continue.
That's correct.
Okay.
We would continue moving forward with foreclosure.
Right. And I know we've talked about it just by the sheer number of years that we made efforts to contact the homeowner and so forth and got no response.
That's correct.
Okay. So basically, though we have a motion here, if we did nothing and just it continued, Jim, then at some point you would file?
Correct. Well, yeah, the council's already authorized. Like I said, there was some technical issue that I don't know would be an issue, but I wanted to make sure it did not become one. So we're dealing with that right now. All it did was delay the filing of the lawsuit by a few months.
Okay.
Well, I, can I make a comment? I personally would say that I would feel comfortable, this is where I'm at, releasing the lien if we saw some effort on your part or on the owner's part, I guess I shouldn't speak directly to you, to make that property safe. It's not safe. I mean, I've been by there. You can drive down Lee. It's in really bad condition. I mean, if somebody was able to get in there and commit suicide. I don't, I can only go, I don't know much for sure.
Whatever.
I would ask that maybe we could bring it back.
Yes, sir. Again, public comment portion is over.
I'm just going to say, where I'm coming from is if we wanted to bring this back to the table and you made an effort to actually take that building down and make it to where it is safe, I would be comfortable releasing the lien because that would show an effort of good faith on your side to handle the property. And then you could move on with your other properties. I don't want to tie up those finances for you, but we, I personally need to see something because this, I mean, $300,000 in liens coming through, it's a lot of money. And so this isn't something that just happened overnight. And I respect the fact that things happen and I understand that you're in a position, but we, you know, and I know you say that you're in the effort. So if that's the case, then maybe you can get that happen soon and we could, I would like to revisit it then. I don't know what, how you guys feel, maybe a consensus on?
Well, we have a motion here.
Oh, we have, okay.
At this time, okay?
That's where I'm at.
So we have to vote on that first.
If we decide to not release the lien tonight, we could revisit it, like Mindy said, again, and vote to release it later.
Correct.
If we see things, okay.
Yes.
We do have time and hours.
Just to let you know, the, I didn't speak with Mr. Fruther, but I spoke to his attorney. And it's their intention to come in and ask council to reduce the lien on the Lee Avenue property.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, there's the comment this time.
And I'm just letting you know.
And you know, this is what I always anticipate. This has been 12 years going on. There was no communication. There was nothing that was done. And I am not in favor of lessening the lien or releasing the lien. I'm sorry. You know, I understand things happen. But communication on your part would have made it a lot easier in the beginning and a lot easier through this whole process. And there was no communication.
No, sir, I'm sorry. The public comment portion is not open. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think that.
More time.
I think that we're at a position where we don't really need to do anything. We don't need to act on this motion. We just let things proceed forward. And Mindy, things can proceed forward. Action can be taken by this gentleman to move this forward, which could give us opportunity to rethink this whole thing. So I think we either need to vote on this motion.
I will rescind my motion.
That was my second comment.
And I will also say this. In 2008 and in 2009 and all through those years, I was the council liaison to the code enforcement board. And I was there when this issue came up more than one time. And there was never anyone here addressing the issue. So I'm just going to say that so everyone in the audience knows that there was multiple contact and there were plenty of opportunities for things to have gotten done and they never were done. And I'm going to rescind my motion.
Your second? You rescind who?
I will read it.
Okay, thank you. So Jim, consensus from council just to move forward. And if the issue needs to come back before council, you'll bring it back to us.
They need to have a proposal is what you're telling me.
Yeah, we have to see something.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you, Dominic.
Items in report? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The annual, to write Love on Our Arms, the sixth annual Run For It 5K takes place on Saturday, April 13th, beginning at the David R. Strucker Community Center at 8:00 AM. And this run is a way for us to connect with the people in our community and share the mission of spreading hope and finding help for those struggling with mental illness. So you can register for that at runforit5k.com. On Thursday, April 18th, the Recreation Department will host the Flashlight Easter egg hunt. Children in first through sixth grades hunt unassisted in this fun nighttime event. Cost is $7 per child and tickets must be purchased online or at the Rec Department by April 17th. And the event is at the DeSoto Baseball Field at 8:45 PM. Informational items, the staff is recommending a May 4th date for the grand opening celebration of the new DeSoto Park. So please mark your calendars for that. We have, we are inviting several interested organizations, such as the Brevard Commission on Aging, and as well as our legislative delegation. And we're planning events like, you know, a challenge for using the equipment, and then also Azumba, and hopefully trying to get a pancake breakfast for that event as well.
And that is on the 4th?
That's correct.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, what time would you anticipate that starts?
At 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay. Thank you.
And the city is holding, well, we did, we held a pre-construction meeting this morning for the construction of the new stormwater pipe replacement projects approved by council at the March 20th city council meeting. And that was for Elm, Temple and DeSoto. We are anticipating a June 1st start date. And because we will be doing door hangers and letters to residents, we will probably be impacting 25 driveways. So you may get some calls on that. So we just wanted to prepare you for that. And we'll send you the letters that we're sending out so you understand the process and what's going on.
Okay.
Please see the attached letter from Representative Tyler Saroye assisting the city in obtaining the report from the Department of Health regarding cancer cases in our community. And Representative Thad Altman has been also assisting. However, Representative Saroye actually held a meeting with the Department of Health and has basically demanded that report be finished by April 30th. So we're hoping to get that by then. Before, oh, I also wanted to make sure that you're aware the Pelican Beach Pavilion roofs are being replaced right now. So you see that work being done currently. And I'm going to do this action item before we present the doubles video real quick.
Courtney, one thing, if I may, just going back, the pre-construction meeting, are you now going to have meetings with the homeowners who this area is going to affect? Or are you just going to do it by?
We're going to do it by letter and door hanger.
Okay.
And then we'll have, of course, our staff out there. And the biggest, you know, issue is the driveways. And we already, I believe they've already done the video of each property to, you know, have the before and after. So we know what to fix, what was our fault if we have, if we need to fix, stuff like that. But the biggest issue that we run into is, you know, people's landscaping and then also the pavers, the driveway pavers. So that's something we don't reinstall. And that's always an issue when we go through that. So in your packet, you will see a request from Brevard County. This is a request to reduce the setback for the muck dredging near our dock of city property. And we have, what they're talking about is Sampson Island, from 10 feet to 5 feet. So they'd like to dredge closer to the dock to get as much muck as possible. And so I'm seeking your approval to sign that agreement.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city to reduce the setback by 5 feet.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any comments from council on this?
I have a question. Why was it not 5 feet to begin with? And why was it 10? Is there some sort of science?
That's a state statute requirement, yeah.
And is there any potential issues we're going to look at, like mangroves? Or are we going to?
It wouldn't be environmental issues. It's a setback from the docks so they don't hit the dock.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I heard dock.
Thank you. Any further comment from council before I open it for public? At this time, open up for public comment on the setback, on the citizens of Satellite Beach first. Ron?
Ron Jurgutis, Satellite Beach. I know it was just mentioned that it's an issue of hitting the docks, but why isn't it zero setback is the question? Is there going to be property damage? I mean, muck is muck. If it was done the right way to begin with when the canals were done, I thought we would like to, or would prefer, to get rid of it all because that muck, sitting there within 5 feet, and you can see the drainage coming down on the roads, from the roads into the canals, it almost seems like an amoeba that's going to grow. And I got to question that. The docks, I understand, if it's cost resistance to do it that way, then perhaps there should be a methodology to figure out how that's going to be done in the future there. Because muck's going to be standing there and it's going to build and build again. What? It doesn't make sense. I apologize. It does not make sense to go that route. If there's liability issues, then so disclose it. If there are issues above and beyond damaging the docks, then let's know it. And then we have, I believe we have an ordinance out there that the, people call them bulkhead. call them bulkheads. I believe everyone wants to go natural out there with the revengement rock. Well, then I got another issue. But maybe this should be left to another agency, another board to be brought forward. This is the best that can be done at this point. But I don't agree with it being the best at this point in time. I think people can do better. Thank you.
The mic's still open for comments?
Dale Abrams, CRA resident in Satellite Beach. This is going to be the Grand Canal and it's going to be all the fingers, like in the fountains and, no.
This item is for Sampson's Island dock. That's it.
That's it?
Okay.
It's for city property. We can't, we can't sign easements for other people's property. So this is an agreement for our property.
For our property. So they can get close enough to get more muck out.
Right. Where's the muck going when it's removed?
Their spoil site is on Pineda.
On Pineda?
Yeah.
That little island? Okay.
I believe they made a presentation at the David Schechter Center, maybe two years ago, three years ago now, and said how they're going to use the latest technology on that.
They're going to de-water it, de-water it?
Yeah, and they were going to spray it or something and then take it away daily? Was that?
No.
Well, we had a presentation from the county.
Is this project starting when?
It's probably going to start in about a year. It takes a long time to get the permitting and the agreements together.
Has the project started in the unincorporated area in the grant?
No, this is their project. This is the agreement that we're signing.
Oh, this is the unincorporated project? Oh, okay.
This is the dock at Sampson's Island.
This is the dock at Sampson's Island.
We're not here to discuss all this other stuff.
Okay, all right. Are we testing any of the muck?
I don't know if the county's doing that or not.
So we would have to talk to the county on that one. All right.
The mic's open?
Hi, I have a question about the testing of the muck. You said the county's doing it. Well, are they going to be there when that muck is pulled from the front of Sampson's Island? I've fished there since my children were one. They're now, the oldest is 27. So I've watched it go from clear water with horseshoe crabs and grass to something you can't see an inch deep in. And I've seen it go from snakes swimming past and dolphins to now dolphins with measles going past. I say, yeah, well, let's get rid of the muck. But the muck's got arsenic in it and all kind of fun stuff from the base. It's trickled down. So if you take it from that spoil island, which was donated by Sam Fuchs to the city, it was created by dredging. So there's muck. The muck is from the island. It's, it's seeped down in and coagulated, coagulated with the other muck. You know, there's toxins in that sand on Sampson's Island. There has to be. It's a spoil island. They dug it up and dumped it there. Anything you all dig out now is hazardous waste, in my opinion. As a native, I've seen what it does. It, it's not good. Please, I would strongly suggest, please test that muck, please. I've been to the bottom because my kids have dropped fishing poles. I used to dig down there and be able to grab that fishing pole. I used to be able to see that fishing pole. Now I bet you there's 20, 30, then you would not even know they're there until you, you come right upon them. When you dredge there, you'll find sunglasses and fishing poles and some will be colties. But anyhow, seriously, please test that because I know that this spoil island itself will leach into the water. I know that the base has leached into the water. So if it's all in the muck and you bring the muck out, if we dump it in Pineda, it's just going to come right back beachside the next good strong stand, storm that you have, windstorm that you have. I mean, it's going to wash over. It's not going to stay there unless you put a fence around it. I mean, right? Muck travels. Sand, sand travels. That's why the sand on the beach travels. The sand in the water will travel too in the Indian River. Thank you. Shame, shame, shame on you for not letting me speak last time on the last issue.
Please speak on this one.
But on this issue, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shore. So I want to bring up two issues. One to do with the DOH, a study that they sent off in November to the CDC and the ASTDR for their review of it before they released it. So that was in November. That study, just for clarification, was a cancer study for PFOS only, not for the broad spectrum of cancers that we as residents of this area of 32937, of which I'm in that zip code, had understood. So there are a number of people who have petitioned the state for...
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you. This is nothing, please listen.
She was talking about her thing. Okay. So then I will move on to muck.
Please, one second.
I will move on. I respect you. Move on to muck.
No, wait, one second. I just want to, your time's stopped.
Right.
This particular topic is to move from 10 foot to five foot in. That's what we're discussing, okay? From 10 to five.
Okay.
That's the discussion.
So the discussion is pertaining where, I'll take that, to where you're going to take that muck when you take it out of that section?
No, ma'am, this is not...
Are you allowed everybody else? So what is your objection with me, Mayor?
Ma'am, I don't have an objection to you speaking at all.
But she spoke about the muck and the contaminants.
We are right here. We need to speak about...
So this becomes personal. Do you see that?
Ma'am, here's your discussion. From moving to 10 feet to five feet. I let her talk. I could have cut her off. We've already, she already made those same points. You're going to be labor those points. So it's 10 foot to five foot. If your discussion is concerning that, I'll be more happy for you to talk.
Okay, so on that 10 foot to five foot, in that additional muck that you remove, it is going to the spoil island with contaminants in it. The additional muck you were removing, when you remove that additional five feet, it has contaminants that are going to the spoil island, which will then drain into the Indian River. Boom. There's more than one way to skin a cat, Mayor.
First off, I, it doesn't mean it's, right. It's 10 foot to five foot. The muck's coming out of there. They tell us that the muck is very dangerous to be there. It needs to be removed. And that's the process. We're followed by science-based information. Courtney?
Can I just clarify this too?
Yep.
The county did testing on the muck and they believe they tested for PFOS and PFOA and that report is on our website. So you can see that report.
You guys are...
I'm not really sure why that's funny, but...
Thank you.
No, I'm leaving because I...
Goodbye, thank you.
You guys are ethical clowns. I can leave on my mountain feet. I don't need you to push me.
So the, the county tested for the muck, tested the muck and the water column for PFOS and PFOA. The muck was a lot lesser value than the water column. And that is very, that matches quite a bit, the test results on both the base and in our situation where the PFOS and PFOA is more prevalent in water and attaches more, itself to more to water and passes through soil pretty quickly. The muck dredging project will take out muck, not the river bottom. The river bottom was what was dug out to make the spoil islands years and years ago. It wasn't muck that created those. Muck and river bottom, sandy bottom are two totally different compositions and so on. So this is to remove muck, which is basically pollution. And that will, there's no downside to that. Even if you have contaminants in there, to get it out, there's, there's, there's just really no downside to it. You want to get it out. So that's not, and the demwatering site is not a spoil island. It's a piece of property that's attached to Pineda Causeway right now. So there's a lot of misinformation, I think, that's out there on this issue. But, but the demucking project will do nothing to hurt the river. It will only improve the water quality and, and get out nutrients and other items that are in there. So I just want to make sure that we, we state that for the record.
And I want to also clarify something too, because, and I'm sorry that she's gone, but that piece of property that they are sending this to is a burned piece of property where nothing will be coming out of it. It will go into that burned piece of property. It will dry. They will spray it. It will dry and then they truck it away. So nothing is going to be draining back out into the, into the river. So I want to make sure that we clarify that because, once again, we're on YouTube here and I want everybody to know that some of the statements that have been, that have been made are not true.
The presentation that was given to us by the county at the Schechter Center was a very, very good presentation on new technology that was going to be used on it, how they were going to make this site so the water didn't drain in, back into it, the muck. And they would cart away the muck once it sprayed and dried. And the spraying process was something new that would coagulate it faster.
Right.
And they would get rid of it.
And it's not on a spoil island. It is on the, it is on a piece of land that the actual Pineda is sitting on, where all the Brazilian peppers are. They're going to clear those out. And that's the site of this property.
They're also having to construct turn lanes for the trucks and so on. So it's a pretty involved process.
Jody?
I was just going to ask, do you know that presentation, was it filmed? Was there a PowerPoint? Is there anything on the county website that we could find to watch that again?
There is.
Now that it's happening now?
You can go to the county website for the Save Our Lagoon, Indian River Lagoon. It's the, we call it SOIRL.
Right.
But that, if you just Google Save Our Indian River Lagoon, you'll go to, right to that website. And it, it has everything you want to know about muck dredging, all of the projects, all of the locations. And that's the other thing is while we know a lot about the projects and we have, even our project that we're trying to get state appropriations for, we're not managing that project. The county is managing that project for us. So those specific issues or items that you all have concerns about, it's probably better to contact the county. And I can put you in touch with the right people at the county, but they're way better at answering these questions than we are. But that, that's something, you know, if you have that interest, you know, just let me know and I can give you the right contact and the phone number and all that and get you in touch with the right people.
Okay. I do have one comment. So I think what, what the source of contention is, and I can only speak on what my, is the worry about the muck is that we have tested for the PFOAs and the PFOS because that's been the big star contaminant that has been, and I say that, you know, facetiously. So, but there is some concerns because of what she has spoke, what Sandra spoke about is from the dump and from the things that she potentially thinks that are in the ground as well. And I think her concern is that she wants to see other things tested in the muck to make sure, because that would show maybe some sort of proof of if things have drained. And I know this isn't our place, but I'm just trying to kind of vocalize why, where I think she's coming from, why she's so emotional about it. And I, I do think that we can't do anything about that. But, you know, the county, you know, go, go speak with them and see if they can do. I mean, we can't, we can't, we don't have that capability. And I don't completely disagree with her. I think that we should probably test for other chemicals.
Well, the other thing too is like when you're doing muck removal, it's literally muck removal. I mean, it's removing it.
Yeah.
So it's not going back in. And even the, the de-watering, the water is being treated before it goes back in. And it's called, what do we call it? Interstitial water treatment.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the muck, but I do, I do think that, you know, if there is contamination in our soil, we need to know about it and we need to know if we can fix it. If there isn't, there isn't. But that's something that needs to be another discussion at another time.
If you have a situation with the county too, is that this is a, the endeavor of cleaning the lagoon is, is massive. And, and I even, I was talking to a muck expert and was talking about, you know, well, the possible contaminants. And he just looked at me and said, you know, like kind of, you know, it's hard enough to get the muck out with, you know, worrying about the nutrients. So I think there's that overwhelmingness to that, you know? But I agree, you know, it's, it would definitely be a time to start collecting that data. But I don't know if there's going to be a lot that the county can do about it at this point.
You know, there's not one person sitting up here that doesn't have the same concerns that these people have that are, they're bringing to our attention. But this is a county issue. They're the one handling the project. They're the ones you should be going and talking to. Because we're not the people that are handling it. We are trying, we've tried to expedite everything through this whole process from day one with the PFOS and everything else. And we are working diligently, but it's the county that's handling these projects.
But they're backing it.
Yeah, they're the ones that are doing the muck. And if there's issues with chemicals, you need to be talking to the county.
Any further discussion? Because we do have a motion here for the five feet. Get back to the subject.
Did somebody second it?
Five feet.
Yep.
We do. Yes, everybody's, so, okay.
That's the...
Councilor Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilor Gibson?
Yes.
Councilor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilor Losneri?
Yes.
And Mayor Kucina?
Yes. Thank you, Courtney. I think you have one more item you're going to go back to.
Yeah, before we get to that, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, misinformation on doubles too. That the, the property that was purchased back in 2007 was purchased at its highest and best use, which is a gas station. And here's the code. It's zoning district is commercial and gas stations are allowed on this property. And they have to be located at a signalized intersection. And because this property was there at a signalized intersection, it was a prime spot for a gas station. And we received multiple offers by gas stations to purchase the property. And the council purchased the property specifically, or the CRA specifically to change or to control the use of what goes on there and that they did not want a gas station. So because we changed the use, we changed the value. And when you change the value, you know, that's where that, you know, the city lost a million dollars. Well, the city made that specific choice to prevent a gas station by moving to a restaurant. And because of that, that's where the value decline came in. And it's also a value decline as well because we purchased at the height of the market. And at this point, you know, this, the market hasn't, the commercial market especially has not yet gotten up back into the 2007 timeframe. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it's all about perspective and, you know...
And there was one other thing on that piece of property, Courtney. A gas station came to us and wanted an, they needed a change of, they asked for a variance.
That's right.
And they came to us. So there was actually a gas station under contract for that piece of property.
I think it was 15 pumps, right?
Right. They, they needed one more, and a setback on the back property line. And it came to us.
And as you know...
And that's how we found out about it because it was a legally permitted use for that piece of property.
And legal permitted uses are, are right to the property owner. They have a right to their zoning category and they have a right to the, to build what is allowed in that zoning district as long as it meets all of our codes. So it doesn't matter whether the city likes it or not. And because the city did not want that, that's the only recourse the city had, was to purchase the property.
Yep. Okay. Everybody good?
And the residents around that, Courtney, around that area?
Yep.
Strongly lobbied this council?
That's right.
To make that happen on their behalf.
And, and it was not just the residents around the property. It was residents up and down DeSoto Parkway who knew that they were going to have to be dealing with it as traffic.
Traffic.
So it was, it was a large group of people that were urging the city to do something to purchase the property.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Everybody good? Anything else, Courtney?
Yep, that's it.
Please, Vivian?
We'll end with a positive.
Any questions for City Manager? Okay, here are none. We've been going for an hour and a half. Might need a five-minute break?
Five minutes, please.
Okay. We'll recess the meeting for five minutes, we back here approximately 8:35. Are we convening the meeting at approximately 8:40? And we're moving on to Agenda Item 8, Discuss Take Action on International Association of Firefighters Contract. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. We're asking for your approval of the IAFF contract for October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2021, as submitted and ratified by the membership. So they have gone ahead and voted on this, they voted on this on March 29th. So this contract is very similar to the FOP contract you have approved already. This includes a 2% raise for your current year that we're in, also for 1920 and 2021, a 3% raise, with an opener allowing the city to further negotiate these raises if necessary. We also have the same split as FOP with the 50-50 for 175, 185, with 50% going to the union and 50% or union members, I'm sorry, and 50% going to the pension plan to cover the city's annual contributions. And then also, we made several changes, basically language changes to reflect current compliance with Department of Labor laws, also Veterans Holiday addition, and then some references to the compliance with the FMLA, and changes to the flexibility of two employers, employees during extended FMLA absences so they don't completely exhaust their leave time, and that's been a problem with us in the past. So this is very similar to FOP, and really no changes except for minor language differences between the two unions.
Make a motion to approve the IAFF contract for October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2021, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Lynn Gibson. Further discussion? Here are none at this time, open up Agenda Item 8 for public comment. Here are no public comment, back to council. Courtney, everybody as happy as we can be. At this point, hopefully, everybody.
Thank you all.
Are you guys happy?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you for all the negotiating.
You guys are great. You know how I feel about you. Great, you know, work to get better every time. And thank you, everybody, for sitting down and coming up with something that I hope we all can live with for at least the next few years. So, thank you. Further?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Moncenero?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Discuss Take Action on the National Estuary Program, the NEP Grant Application for Funding for Sampson Island Submerged Land Restoration.
Nick, do you want to present?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for taking a look at this proposal. The proposal is a Habitat Mosaic Pilot Project. So recently, I went and spoke with the Northeastern Restoration Team, a team of highly intelligent individuals from a variety of different departments, St. John's, FWC, DEP, and the NEP also. Presented this to them, got some comments, some feedback, been working with a number of community partners, FOS, Florida Oceanographic Society, the Harbor Branch Institute, Marine Discovery Center, and a number of other community partners, including FIT, who are all willing to participate. You'll see the attached letters of support for a number of them. Also just received another one this morning from FIT for the water quality sampling portion of this. And basically, the idea is if we create a Habitat Mosaic on the west side of Sampson's Island, where there is, was historically seagrasses up until 2007, and even 2011, but the data from St. John's goes back and shows that there was 35 acres in 2007, which was really pretty significant. That habitat is one of the healthiest because of Sampson's Island. The mangrove fringe there produces some of the clearer waters that you'll see in the IRL. And we actually went and looked at it, and there's about two and a half feet of depth that you can actually see the bottom. And it's a sandy bottom, which is really nice. So if we can get a Habitat Mosaic Pilot Project, we can actually determine which types of seagrass planting techniques work better, which types of clam planting techniques work better, and oyster planting techniques work better. Any questions on this? I'd be happy to, yeah, field any questions.
Thank you for doing it. I sit on it. Unfortunately, I'm going to vote yes for you tonight, but I'm not allowed to rate this project. So hopefully, some of the other people will rate it really high and you get the grant, because I sit on the committee. So, great job.
I just do have one quick question. And maybe this is me not being as up to date on the oyster plantings and things like that, but, you know, traditionally, there was a lot of plastics used with oyster mats and things like that, where we be?
Good question. So the DEP does have some concerns, and they've been working the Mount Leopards Zoo in the county. Currently, the bag method does include the plastic component. If the bags are successful, the spat will adhere and they will grow over the plastic. We are also talking with the DEP, actually today, I just talked with them about alternatives, maybe changing some portions of the grant application to include other techniques that would be more beneficial without the plastic. So things like a coquina rock, or a, one that we found out at the NRT meeting was lightly coated oyster shells with concrete. So there's 500 feet proposed in the project of the oyster, maybe we can take a portion of that 100-feet section, one of them, and do coquina rock, 100-foot section, and do the lightly coated oyster, and then 100-foot section with the bags, just to try to get a variety to see which techniques work best, and also to reduce our impact. One of the things that the DEP mentioned was, in their contract for permitting, if they were to require us to remove any bags that didn't adhere spat and grow over after a certain period, determining a success rate. So these are some things we're talking about with them now to try to eliminate future problems if we were to get the grant.
Yeah, because the biggest term that I've learned since I've been elected onto City Council are what are the unintended consequences? And, you know, plastic pollution, we've already had the studies, and Indian River Lagoon has some serious issues with our plastic, you know, microplastics and things like that. So I just think it's really important to try to stay as far away from them as possible.
There's two research grants that have been approved through the TDC Lagoon funding that is specifically looking at alternatives for oyster mats and moisture gardening without plastic. The challenge is, is that it has to be a very durable material in water. And there's not many out there that allows you to be durable in water, but they are trying to create that. And I think some of them were even looking at hemp products.
Hemp products, starch base was coming out of Norway, but that was dissolving too quickly.
So, yeah, so they're doing all of those. And I think we have some, had lead time before the project would start, because we're still putting together the, so we have some opportunity if there's, if that timing comes in, that we can look at, you know, see if we can try to work in those other techniques.
Okay.
So I did talk with Marine Discovery Center and FOS, who are providing the oyster, and if things change, they can change whatever they put it in, that's not really the issue.
Okay, good, okay.
I just looked at this and, you know, I just think that this is a really creative way that you looked at, you know, partnering, you know, through the grant process with in-kind stuff and money stuff. And I just want to commend you for, you know, thinking outside the box and doing this.
It does come at no cost to the city, except for my halftime.
So I'll make a motion to authorize staff to submit an application to the National Estuary Grant Program for Construction of the Sampson's Island Submerged Land Restoration Pilot Project.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Any further discussion with council?
I did find a typo. When does the grant have to be turned in?
The 10th.
And when would you find out if you?
Three months from then.
Pretty quick, okay.
So thank you very much for approving this Sizzler.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 9.
Roger Goodis, Satellite Beach. It is a true effort to bring it forward this way, that there are grants for this, but common sense tells me, and I know government is slow at this many times, but I often wondered in the past, I never brought it up, we were able to pass something in regards to straws, plastic bags for the city, and yet I saw this, the oyster mats using plastic. It befuddled me. It truly befuddled me that we're doing this and we're finding out the carcinogens from plastics going into the lagoon are possibly causing the dolphins' illnesses. We're reading about that. As far as I'm concerned, this is egregious. I believe the city and other municipalities, especially the league of cities, should coalesce and make sure that the plastic mat issue goes away here. We're pulling out supposedly fishing rods and all kinds of other debris in the lagoon, fiberglass and whatnot, but yet we're doing plastic mats? And now we're talking with concrete, using concrete. Well, there's a side effect, like somebody said here tonight, unintended consequences. This should be a priority, and our city is involved with the lagoon. There's no question, Courtney's involved, the mayor's involved. This needs to be addressed sooner than later, and put a rider on there to make sure that it happens. Thank you.
Podium still open for public comment? Here are no further, back to council. Further council comments or questions? Here are none. Quinn?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Moncenero?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, motion passes. Nick, thanks, buddy. Good job. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Budget Workshop Five-Year Forecast. Sorry to keep you so long. Council, on your desk is the paperwork that was handed out to us.
And the dark one is going to be the one that we're going to look at, and then the other one is just additional resources that we're going to reference in this one. So you have it. You want to start?
So what we wanted to do is kind of give you a background of where we were headed, and, you know, some of our recommendations as we move into the budget season. And we wanted to give you that foundation before you voted on your next agenda item, so you have that background in your head. So right now, we wanted to just kind of give, and we know, you know this, but we wanted to remind the community of, you know, why we are different from other communities. And I think, sometimes we hear that a lot, is, you know, the mileage rate over here is so much lower than here and so on. And we have to make sure that people understand that, you have to really compare apples to apples. And in our case, we are very different from a lot of other cities. And the first, the first thing is that we are a full-service city, you know, with the exception of utilities, we provide every service. So we provide fire, police, recreation, public works, we do basically everything. And we do not have any county parks in our community, we take care of all of the public facilities in the community with the exception of libraries. So everything is the city's facilities. And we do not outsource any function to the county. There are some other cities that do that, that they either outsource parks and rec to the county, or they do not have a fire department and fall back onto the county for that. We do not do that. We have our own departments here. We are, also, we have, we're a beach community, so a lot of our facilities are used by other areas of the community. So we have a lot of non-residents that use our facilities. For example, the Pelican Beach Clubhouse was rented out 80% of the time from April 1st, 2018, to April 1st, 2019, to non-residents, people that did not live in the city of Satellite Beach. And we also had pavilions at Pelican Beach were rented out 62% of the time to non-residents. So that's another aspect of being a beach community that, you know, you really can't compare that to an area. For example, I probably will not go to the city of Melbourne and rent out one of their pavilions at their parks. That's just probably not something I'm going to do very often, because most people, if they, you know, want to do that, they normally do that at the beach. And if, and they're going to rent something outside of the community they live in. So that is something that beach communities have. We cater to areas and a population that does not pay taxes to us. The city of Satellite Beach also has numerous recreation facilities that outnumber those of other cities. For example, we have 16 beach access as well, and adjacent community has three. So here's that, you know, table, I like, I wish I could hand this out every time I'm at Publix. And that's really because this is the difference, and this is the reason why we have issues that some other communities, or challenges that some other communities don't have. Our park facilities, some of the things that we forget about, or I think, some people just don't really think about, when we have park facilities, is everything that we have to take care of that go along with having a park facility. We have eight restroom facilities in the city of Satellite Beach, public restroom facilities that we have to maintain. We have to clean them, keep them stocked, we have to maintain the doors, the stalls, the paint, you know, those plumbing, those are constant maintenance issues for us every day. We have pavilion and facility roofs that we have to replace. We have landscaping, invasive removal, plant replacement, weed removal, and field maintenance. And field maintenance is top dressing, making sure there's no divots in the grass. And so it's pretty involved. We also have the dog park, which gets resodded either once or twice a year. We resod the entire thing. We replace the fencing. We have field fencing that we replace quite a bit. A lot of times, we can get the leagues to help us with that, but many times, we, you know, we pay either all of our portion of those costs. We have to resurface all of the courts that we have. We have racquetball courts and tennis courts, we have to resurface those. We have five playgrounds. So you'll see the proposals when we go into, when we went to the public works facility. We have Cinnamon Park, which is right next to Olson Field Playground, and we're hoping to eliminate Olson Field and move Cinnamon Park over there to try to eliminate one of the ongoing maintenance issues of playgrounds. So those are some of the things that we think about, because we have to program those replacements. You know, they get replaced in Satellite Beach about every eight to 10 years. So when you have five, that's basically a playground a year. We have one park now with exercise equipment, so that's another thing that we added to the community that we have to now maintain. So, and then I haven't written that on here, but I'm going to say it anyway, we did buy a shopping center. And we have, that shopping center roof is a half a million dollars. So those are the things that we, you know, have to budget for and maintain while we're moving forward. This is the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendations from the July 3rd, 2018 presentation they made to you. So I just wanted to keep that in front of you, so you knew what their recommendations were. We have done all of their recommendations, with the exception of the non-budget related ones, like create business development, you know, those types of things. I think we've done creating business development and business relationship activities, we just not have, we have not committed, created a committee. We have not done a city tour, but we have started looking at the feasibility of using assessments for things like seawalls and stuff like that in the future, and we're starting to review those options. But we have not come to you with any of that research yet. So those are some of the things we haven't, we haven't completed. But we have embarked on looking at debt reduction with allocating 10% of each year's But we have embarked on looking at debt reduction with allocating 10% of each year's net increases to reserves, to debt reduction. We have looked at raising, we raised the stormwater fee already. We created a departmental operating budget for hurricanes, and that's already in your budget, and we raised the mileage rate, however, we did not go to 8.9, but we did go to 8.8212. And they are recommending to keep that until the 15% excess is direct, or until the reserves may, you know, make it to the, to the goal that we have. So I'm going to let Brittany start on the numbers, and we're going to present to you our recommendation currently, and, and just kind of quickly, before she gets started, just recognize that at this point in the budget year, all we're using is assumptions, and they're very conservative. So it only gets better from here, unless there's some crazy thing that happens, like the state says, okay, you can't have, you know, communication services taxes anymore or something like that. But until then, these are, our revenues are underestimated and our expenses are slightly overestimated, so, you know, as, as the budget year trugs on and we get in closer to the numbers that we know are going to be there, that, you know, we, you'll see a better scenario as time moves on. But this is the worst-case scenario that we're going to be presenting to you tonight.
So looking at the revenues, one of the things that we looked at with Ad Valorem is taking a look at the last eight years, you know, how the property tax values gone up, what have they done, and what kind of revenue does that look like to the city? And it's roughly about $300,000 to $350,000 of additional revenue into your Ad Valorem each year. That's roughly what it is. So in your Ad Valorem line item for the next, this year and on forward to 2324, it does include the new construction based on an 8.7 mileage rate for fiscal year 1920, and then an 8.622 for future years. So this is going to include the, the new townhomes going up in Montecito, the Oceana condos, Villasiana Townhomes, and Lansing Island single-family homes. The other revenues, like, like the city manager said, we've kind of stayed consistent, because we don't know what the state's going to do. You never know for sure, so the best thing for us to do is just continue to keep them consistent, and then, and we hope for the best. We did take into consideration, as you heard, with the union contracts, both police and for fire, the 175, 185 money is now going to be 50/50 starting in fiscal year 1920. So that's a reduction of about $100,000 to the general fund revenues. The stormwater transfers, that is the maintenance that if Public Works goes out and works on stormwater, we pay all that out of the general fund to the stormwater, but reimburses the general fund for that. And that increases in 1920 due to the fact that we've hired additional staff person to help with the stormwater, so that additional funds will come out of the stormwater to reimburse general fund. CRA transfer is the same thing. When Public Works goes out and works on CRA maintenance projects and different maintenance for the CRA area, same thing happens there. Justina does a phenomenal job keeping track of what happens there, and then we make a transfer from the CRA fund to the general fund for that. And then the 65% CRA transfer is that agreement that we have with Brevard County at the end of the fiscal year, whatever left, what they consider the fund balance, it goes back to the percentages the way that it came, so it's 65% back to the general fund, and 35% goes back to the county. Any questions in regards to the revenues? So with personnel, there are, these are the assumptions that we're taking with personnel for these, for these next few fiscal years. This will include a 3% raise beginning in fiscal year 19 and for future years for the, for the staff. It's estimated for a $200,000 increase in cost for health insurance and workers' comp. A 3% increase in retiree insurance each year is roughly what it is. General employee pension increases is based on prior years. The fiscal year 1920 year is a good number that comes from the actuary reports, and then the 3% increase for the healthcare clinic each year. So obviously with the operating costs, it's fairly self-explanatory here. The line item, obviously, for the hurricane, if we don't have a hurricane, that $100,000 goes straight down to the bottom line and to the reserves. One of the things that we did do last year is we moved all the capital, the, I'm sorry, the software out of the capital assets fund and into the general fund. So that's why you see all those additional movements in there. There is a 2% contingency, because things get more expensive each year, so we want to make sure we plan for that. Police and fire pension is based on information from the actuary. So fiscal year 1920, you don't see a cost there, because it's wrapped up in their personnel. So it was on the previous slide, but then the rest of the years, we've always kind of allocated about $60,000 for additional costs for them each year. And then we've also added the vacation sick for another line item that may not be used, that people leave the city, and so when that happens, we have to pay out vacation and sick time. And so this is additional line item that we're just budgeting for, for those types of things, and if we don't have any of that, then that $100,000 will, again, go straight down to the bottom into the reserves. Any questions?
I have a quick one. The increase in health, that $200,000, where are you getting that number from?
It's a rough estimate of what our health insurance cost has done in years past, as well as workers' comp. So it's just a rough estimate between the two of them. We're hopeful that we'll have some decent numbers for health insurance come June. That way we can kind of massage that number and figure out what a better number will that be. The same thing with workers' comp, I was just on the phone with him yesterday, he's supposed to be getting back to me in the middle of May with giving me some rough numbers of what the rates are going to be, so we'll have a better idea.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the ending of the general fund is just the transfers and then the fund balance. So the transfers, obviously, is the Community Redevelopment Agency Fund. This is the portion of the property taxes that the city gives to this CRA, as well as this is also that $35,000 loan that it pays back from 2012. The capital assets transfer, that number is going to fluctuate, and that, you're going to see that as we get further into this. That's the money that the general fund has to give to the capital assets fund in order to continue to do the projects that we're talking about doing. So as we get further into that, then we can discuss whether or not, if you don't do one of those projects, and that would lessen the amount that the general fund has to give to the capital assets to continue to fund all those things. And then, as you can see, right in fiscal year 1819, right now it looks like we're going to hopefully net about $500,000 to the positive, which means that will go straight into our reserves, which will then boost our reserves where they, not where they need to be, but in a much better position than we have seen for the last couple of years. So again, just to make sure that we keep up with this, this current forecast does lower the mileage rate to an 8.7 fiscal year 1920, and then down to an 8.622 for the future This is just a very quick overview of those community service funds we've talked about many times, the recycling funds, Samson's Island, beautification, the ALS trust fund the fire department has, the community service fund that the police department has, and then, of course, the recreation fund. So those are all just the boards that we have, these are the funds that they have to be able to do projects that they do with. Stormwater fund is pretty self-explanatory. The raise, the rate got raised, and so now we're going to be starting the stormwater master plan project, as the city manager spoke about earlier. June 1st is the start date for all of that, so we're going to start that process. So that's what you're going to see here. The good news is, this year, we're going to pay off the debt in the stormwater, so there's no more debt in the stormwater after this fiscal year. And then it will just, you know, it'll be the revenues coming in, and we'll, you know, do the projects, and then transfer the money over to the general fund for payroll, and that's all that's going to happen in the stormwater fund.
Very exciting.
Sorry.
It's this cord.
Community Redevelopment Agency Fund is pretty well self-explanatory as well. The revenues that come into there are what the general fund passes over from the property taxes, as well as what Brevard County gives us, and that's all based upon what their mileage rate is, so we won't know for sure what that is for another few more months. This is just based on averages over the last few years. Then we have the projects that are in there currently, this is just for fiscal year 1819. After this year, we're shutting down the projects, so then it'll just be the revenue comes in, the debt will be paid, and then the rest of it will go back to the general fund and to the county. Okay, capital assets fund. Utility tax revenues are based on previous years, so only about $775,000 comes into the utility, or to the capital assets fund from utility taxes. So the planned additional debt service right now is the Public Works and Fire Building, which we've had many discussions on, and then the improvements through the agreement with the ABM buildings identified with the investment grade audit, which will be coming to you in May, is the tentative date. So when you see the, these are all the revenues.
Can you, can you go?
You want to go back one?
Yeah, go back one real quick.
Utility tax, sorry.
Yeah, I think, we just want to make sure, there's an option, if you would, the, what's built in currently, we have the, the debt funding for the building in this plan already. So if you want to lower the mileage rate and raise the, the utility tax, that's an option for you. You don't have to. So that's something that's on the table that you could do. Sometimes elected officials want the utility tax, because it spreads out to renters as well, those costs, and not to just homeowners, so that's an option that you can always look at. But that's not something you have to do to, to fund anything, or to keep our heads above water or anything, but that would allow you to lower the mileage rate more if you wanted to do that.
If we, if we looked at something like that, do we have any idea what we would be able to lower it to?
We can, we can get that to you, we'll get that out to you.
I think that would be nice to know, just.
How about a combination? Give us a few choices, maybe a combination of them and see where we.
Because that's the last utility that we have, that we have not touched.
And that's, aside from Brevard County, we are the only local government in Brevard County that does not levy a water tax. So that, you know, would put you, you know, you'd put you equal, and then allow you to lower your mileage rate, you know, that's, that's an option that's out there. So we'll, we, when we get closer to the budget, we can provide you those, you know, scenarios that you can look at.
I have others, but I'm going to wait until we're done.
You're going to get a, a view of that, because the, the 10% water tax is planned in here for fiscal year 2122 is just an assumption that we, if we do it then. So at the end of this, you're going to get an option where you're going to see all kinds of mileage rates, and then you're going to see, in order to fund all the things that are in here currently, how low could you go, and what would, how much money would you need to cut out of the budget in order to continue all those things?
Okay. So we gave you little scenarios.
Good. scenarios are good. So this is just a slide to, to talk about the, the possible ABM building projects that we've, we've kind of briefed through when Rob was here. So those are all the projects currently that are on the list. There could be additional items, depending on how the investment grade audit comes back. There could be lesser items, depending on how the audit comes back. So we will not, we will not know exactly what we want to do until, give you the ability to choose, once we have a better idea from them, what needs to be fixed here, so. We also have a lot of grants that have been applied for, so these are all things in the, in the projects as well, but if we're not able to get awarded the grant funds, then we'll just move these projects out to future years when the funds are able to be secured. To the kayak launch, the dog park needs to be, have an extension, a playground at the tennis courts, the senior baseball field, restrooms, and then the skate park walkway. Those are all things that have been applied for for grants. So there are a lot of expenditures which are going to be on the next couple of slides for the capital assets fund. It is difficult to truly project the capital assets fund, as there are many, many variables to it. Staff work with each department, along with the city manager, to decide which expenditures are needed compared to just a wish list. So the ones that are presented to you tonight in this, in this forecast are things that the departments have said, we truly do need these types of things in order to be able to continue our department to work effectively and efficiently. The bottom of this, as, as the city manager said, it does have the program in here, the additional debt. So the next item we're going to talk about is the utility tax revenue note, series 2019. That additional debt has been built into this, as well as if we, if council were to choose to move forward with ABM and have them do the projects, based on what Rob's numbers are and what he and I have worked together. So that's a rough estimate of what the additional debt would be and what it, what it looks But of course, there are always other options. So lowering the mileage rate further than what is projected here is an option, but capital projects would have to be the offset to not impact the reserves for the general fund. The forecast was built around projects citizens and councils have asked for, to be started, completed, improved. It was also built around each department to meet the needs for them to run efficiently and effectively. The last two audits have had a declining financial condition, therefore the forecast adds to the city's reserves, which is what we, what the city needs to be doing. So here's the, this sheet I was just talking about. So the preliminary forecast has an 8.7 for 1920, and then an 8.622 for 21, from 2021 through 2324. So as you can see, if you, for 1920, if you were to choose to move it from an 8.7 to an 8.65, you'd need to find $46,000 you want to cut from the budget. If you went to an 8.6, you'd need to find $93,000. 8.5, $140,000. Does that make sense? Can you see what I'm trying to present here? Okay. So that, I think, I think, Dominic, that's kind of what you were looking for. If you want to continue what, what the forecast has and continue to do the projects that staff needs to do, or the departments would like, the citizens would need, like Park Avenue is, is in the project, just putting money off the sides to be able to redo the roads is in the project, you know, obviously the DRS roof needs to be done. There are a lot of things that are not, you know, tangible, but in order to be able to continue to keep up with just the city's infrastructure, there are a lot of things that just need to be done.
So, so just looking at this, and looking at the $200,000 that you had, if we went to some type of water utility, if we went down to 8.5, we'd have $186,000 we'd have to make up, if that was utility tax money, that would pretty much come out. And the way Frank was looking at it is, if we wanted a combination, if we say we went to, instead of 10% to 5%, we would be looking at 8.6, because we'd have pretty much a $93,000 deficit.
And that would be putting the water utility tax in for fiscal year 1920, but yes, that is correct.
But yeah, but, you know, if we did it in 2021, possibly you could be somewhere around 8.4. Okay. I, I understand what you're doing, and it's great. Thank you.
I'll answer, I have some questions, but I'll let her do the presentation.
Almost done. This is really just a list of all the projects in the capital assets fund. This is just so you can take a look at them, that if you were to do something like that on the previous page, where would you, where would you cut that? Or would you add the additional revenue in the utility tax now instead of later? And then we are.
Thank you very, very much. Great presentation. I do have some, I, I tend to like more the user, so it spreads over renters and so forth, who, these are runways and everything else, helps a little bit there. Also, just for my liking, the way I think, all those projects that we have, I mean, there's things that I know has to be done, but I'd like to see a prioritize those projects a little more from the standpoint, you know, I wanted a new truck, but I looked at it and like, it wasn't there. So wants and needs, and I know some of them are definitely needs. I mean, stormwater, Jackson, some of this stuff, Park Avenue is a need. So if I had to balance it at some, what are those needs, and maybe I have to slip something one year, because the need for the stormwater and the road stuff greatly outweighs a, a want, okay? So that's kind of just something I'd like to be able to see, so I know we did on roads.
I will tell you that that forecast is really what it is. I mean, we spent four and a half hours with each department head, as well as their admins, to work through what do you have to have in order to be able to continue to work efficiently and effectively? Because we got to the point of, we, we did, we kicked things down, because we couldn't afford to do them, and we got to a point where we can't do that anymore. And so as we did, we sat for four and a half hours at the Scotty Bulford, and worked this all out, and went through each line item to make sure that this truly was something that they needed in the fiscal year 1920, or wasn't a possibility to move it into 2021, with the same aspect of making sure, and work this without a lot, was, are you sure that it's not going to break down this year? You know what I mean? Because we don't see another DRS air conditioner situation. And so we.
We just had a PD problem too, it's like, that we just weren't prepared for. But I, I want to just point out on the second, on the last page, you'll see some projects with dots next to them. Those are the projects that we're getting grants for, and, and so they're listed as grant projects. If we don't get the grants, we're not doing them. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
I mean, I.
But that's the only ones that we can say with, with clear honesty, that we don't, that's, that's a wish list.
I think it's great, I just want to make sure we, the information is out there, and if there's other ways to spread it a little bit, okay, I guess I'm a little more towards that.
The, for example, and I just have to say, there's nothing on this list that won't have a consequence if you don't do it.
You know, living here as long as I have, I can honestly say, you push things off, and you push things off, and it's probably going to cost you more down the road. I mean, the last road we did by Long Dogger is there, that cost us a lot more than it needed to, because we put it off for such a long period of time. So I think there's a balance there, that we get the, you know, 95% usage of it, but we don't let it impact us that. it, but we don't let it impact us, that the repairs and so forth, and what we gotta do hinders us. If your roof leaks and air conditioner breaks, those are things that we gotta fix, so, anyway.
I just want to make sure I'm reading this right, so the left, so the first column of this one, so that would be 1920, 2021, 22, 23, okay. So this first one is what we would have to do this year, and so we would...
And we're doing most of those already.
Okay.
So they're, they're being done now. So you'll see, like Pelican Beach Park roofs are being done, the skate park video system is being installed, if I'm not mistaken. So, so a lot of these have been, have been in the works, or are being completed now. The, the next year, we have planned, or would like to plan, Park Avenue, um, you know, the curves in that area are so bad, that I don't think they're functioning anymore, that like they should. We have, you know, you have like Oceana Beach access, you know, if that's something you don't want to do, you don't have to do it.
I was under the impression, just that you brought Oceana Beach access up. I was under the impression that the agreement of, there's two accesses, there's RCs, or what they call it, that north access, and then there's a south access, that's supposed to be there. And I was under the impression that that access, they were supposed to do it for us.
They were supposed to.
Absolutely, yeah.
No, no, the agreement says they give us the right away, but to build it, and build the crossover, that's not part of the, of the agreement.
Because I was, I mean...
If I can squeeze money out of somebody, I will, and I can tell you right now, it's not in the agreement.
Because I, I, I just be honest with you, weren't you thought so? I mean, I was always under the impression mark, on that, on that south piece...
I'll be glad to forward you the agreement in the morning, but that, that they, the agreement was for, to donate 10 feet to the, to, to, to create the beach access.
And that's the 2000 agreement, the first agreement, that...
The, the developer's agreement, yes.
That we did back then? I, I, again, I'm sorry, I just was under the impression that that piece was part of...
I think that was something that was talked about, but if it didn't get put into the agreement...
We asked him to build it out of courtesy, and he, no, he didn't want to do it.
Okay.
So there's, you know, and then we have seawalls right now that are crumbling, and we have to address that. So, these are things that...
Where are the seawalls?
The end of Jackson is the one that's, Jackson Court, that's the worst right now. Um, and then we have another one...
The river side.
Good. I can't remember the other one. But, two of them are, are so bad that, and that, you know, when you have that situation, and you have a, the stormwater master plan with outfall locations, you want to make sure that, if you're gonna rebuild the seawall, that you don't have to make the outfall bigger, or change the location of it. So, there's a lot more that goes into that, so that's some of the, you know, issues that we're running into with that. So, you know, a lot of the other things are just equipment replacements, and, um, a lot of these equipment replacements get pushed out every year.
Courtney, Jackson Court, you mentioned that. Um, we didn't give that away, did we? The right away at the end of that?
Half of it is given away, the other half isn't.
We keep easements though, so...
Well, what I'm saying is, the seawall then, we're only responsible for our, how much, 10 feet of it, 15, what's that? It used to be a boat ramp, that's the reason, I'm saying, we owned, all that was a boat ramp down there. So, if we gave that away...
I think the north side was given away, because Jim Byers lived on the south side.
Right, on the corner.
We'll get you the specifics of that, I, I don't know that all on the top of my head, but...
All right.
And, and so, you know, the other things are vehicle replacements for public works, which hasn't been done in, I don't know, 12 years, 15 years? So, you know, at some point, we have to replace their vehicles. So these are the things that we're, we have listed out here, that we can't not do. But, everything on here, there, there will be a consequence of not doing it. So that's why we have listed out the millet rate options like we did, because it's, it's a tough choice. And then there's also, you know, you have capital things that you can cut, but you can also cut on the operations side as well. So if you want to reduce the healthcare plan benefits, if you want to do things like that, that, that's an option, that's always there. I don't recommend it, but that's something you can always do.
Okay. Further question before I open up public comment?
Sorry.
This time, open up for public comment on this agenda item. Thank you.
Good job, sir.
Brian Jurgutis, Satellite Beach. I believe this is the agenda item number 10.
It is.
Uh, I'm looking at the city council agenda packet. I do not see what was presented here. Was it posted on the site?
Yeah, it's presentations, we'll upload it later.
Presentation? Uh, I felt like I, I know the job work was done, but I felt like I was in a car commercial on TV. Tax hack title, call 771-321-4456. I'm very upset that this is not posted here, for citizens to review, even though, from what I heard, council members have, may have seen this, or had the first right to it.
Nope.
We found it tonight.
Tonight, it's a presentation to us.
So you just got it today?
I did.
Okay.
It's a presentation to us, it's nothing...
I, I don't even, I don't even have that capability.
Okay.
Nor does any other citizen. And I didn't, I think that's unfair for the taxpayers, the taxpayers here. And then you're going into agenda 11 here shortly, and the comment I've heard, that this is a preface for it. This is wrong. Agenda item should not be addressed as far as 11, until citizens get to see Agenda Item 10, the presentation. I'm not gonna comment on Agenda 11, I'm gonna leave the chambers right now out of protest. Please understand, but this Agenda Item Number 10 should be brought forward to the citizens, who are the taxpayers. And you all, y'all are taxpayers. What have we got going on here? This is wrong. And if you have the first reading for, well, it's, it's just an Agenda Item 11, and I can go through anomalies, and everything related to that, for 11, but I am leaving the chambers now, because I believe that Number 10 should be presented to everyone, and the following meeting, you should present 11. Thank you.
Thank you. On Agenda Item 10, the floor is still open, but let me make a comment on that. This is just a presentation to us. This will be presented to the citizens. There is a list of dates that we will be holding, public workshops on the agenda, um, excuse me, on the budget for next year, and so forth. So this is just an information gathering for us.
That's great.
This information, either be on the site that people can get, or it will be at City Hall, it's not, have not been voted on, it's just information that they're going forward to have a series of meetings here, that will be public comments.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, but Agenda 11...
You left the podium, sir, I'm not gonna take anymore, the podium is open for public comment.
Diane Douglas, I'll, I'll continue on this theme, because now I'm confused. Does Agenda 11, is that based upon Agenda 10?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
This was just a presentation to us...
That's fine, I'm just, I'm just confused, so I just came up here to ask a question.
Let me just try to help you through that too, is, these are just trying to project out of possibilities that could happen in future years to come. So, they're trying to their best ability to project out with these infrastructure and different repairs on roofs and so forth, if it comes about during that year, that here's what it's gonna cost us. Because as the city ages, there's going to be needed repairs to buildings, even if we put a brand-new air conditioner in right now at a building, it's one day closer from need and repair. Where is that in everybody's mind? So, that's all it was, was just a presentation to give to us, that these could be possible ways to pay for infrastructure, hurricane funds, and so forth, for the future. Will it be voted on? I don't know what's gonna come in the budget, but it's just a presentation to us for that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Because we have, just to tell you, we had a pretty tough situation with FEMA, when hurricanes come, they don't pay us anymore like they used to. So we created a fund, so that we self-fund ourselves, until that money comes to us, if it ever comes to us. So that was some of the things that were put in here, kind of a precautionary buffer.
And, just as a policy, we don't put presentations on our, in our agenda packets, that are numbers like this, because we have to explain it. And if I put it in the agenda packet, I will get 100 phone calls from people wondering what everything is. And that's why I will put it up on the web after this meeting, so it'll be up there tomorrow, so you can look at the presentation tomorrow. But, I like for people to be able to watch the YouTube and see what we're saying, along with the slides, so they understand what we're saying. That, so that's been a policy of mine, since I've started working here six years ago, so...
And you know, and when you look at what we have, action items here, and the dates, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, six or seven budget workshop meetings, we vote on the budget, that will be, that all this stuff will come about, and be published.
I don't think they can see that, though, I think that's part of the problem, they don't have that.
So that's how the process works.
I was just making sure that the information from Agenda 10 isn't part of Agenda 11, I think is what, I got confused about.
Yeah, you're right.
So if, if what was going on with 10 bases something on 11, that's what my concern was. So, that's all, I was just clarifying.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I think the other side of it is too, is to let us know, you know, about lowering the tax, because I think, I know it's kind of important to me, and I think that she wanted to give us an idea about, you know, if, if we do want to move forward lowering the taxes. Here, here are kind of where we're gonna be, so we can start wrapping our head around it, because a budget decision is not something you make overnight, you really need to think about it, and deal with your...
It's been a concern of all of you.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I just know it's been a concern of mine, so...
So, so we wanted to give you some scenarios, and, and basically a foundation of, you know, here's the worst-case scenario, here's what our recommendation is, here's some options for you to consider as we move forward in the budget year. But we wanted to make sure, like, in this worst-case scenario, you know, we have this, the public works building built into this scenario.
And infrastructure needs and stuff that we know are definitely gonna need.
All, everything's in here, is in the scenario that we presented you, the staff recommendation, yes.
Great, thank you. Floor's still open for Agenda Item 10. Here are no further staff, thank you very much for the presentation, I know we'll see it many times here, so appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, discuss take action, request for proposal for the fixed-rate bank qualification term loan, not to exceed 3.6.
So in front of you this evening, um, we have asked PFM Financial Advisors to put a RFP together, um, to be a request for proposal, to be able to send out for a utility tax revenue note, um, for a $3.6 million loan. Um, so that's what's in front of you, that's what you have. So what would, would happen here, is that if you, um, council were to approve this tonight, the RFP would be going out tomorrow to multiple banks, um, and then this would be the, the funding, um, to be able to start the design and architect work for the public works building, as well as, um, be able to continue to, to build it. Um, I know when this originally came to you with the W&amp;J back in February, um, the, the contingent was, you know, the financing for it, and we looked at possibly doing this in two separate loans, um, taking a million dollars out currently, just to do the design and architect, and then take the 2.5 out later. The, the concern that we had, and I discussed this with PFM, was, then you have two loans, you have two closing costs, the cost of it just didn't seem financially, um, staying to do that, you know what I mean? So, that's why we looked at it this way. Um, I, I have, Nick Rocka is here from PFM to answer any additional questions that you guys may have, but I, I've looked through this proposal, I've been on the phone with them a lot, back and forth with emails. Um, one of the things that we talked about doing is, if you were to approve this, and we were to go ahead and get this loan, we could take the additional revenues that we're not, wouldn't be using to build this project yet, and put it into an interest-bearing account, that way it could be earning the interest, that would be, what would be expended in interest expense. So it would be a wash between the interests, if that makes sense. That way, the money's just not sitting in a checking account, it's sitting in an interest-bearing account, earning interest, um, to be able to pay the, the small interest expense that we would be incurred in while holding it there.
The 3.6, is that the building, is that the design and building cost for both fire and public works building, or just the public works building?
It's the design though, for both, the public works and fire, but it's just the building cost of the public works building.
So, when this is, portion of it's complete, we'll have a working plans for the fire department, a building...
Constructed.
Constructed for public works. Is the site for the fire station also ready for...
It would be completed. The, the site work for the fire and public works would be completed.
Okay.
The public works building would be constructed, and the pad for the fire would sit there until the fire department, we'd be, be ready to build it.
Okay. And does anybody have an idea what the cost of that building is, or are we just, no idea?
I mean, we're looking at, we're anticipating 3.5.
Okay. Okay.
And that's something, you know, it's so far out there, you know, that...
Understand, but...
That's something you want to wait on, you can wait on it, but it will be ready, you'll be ready to, everything will be ready for you to do it, when you want to do it.
I'll make a motion to approve PFM Financial Advisors to issue a request for a proposal for 3.6 million fixed-rate bank qualified term loan.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer, further discussion from council.
I just have a quick question, so the money that we're putting into the interest-bearing account, um, when we do start accessing that money, there won't be any penalties for us to access, I mean, it's something we can just...
Right, the city would set up a separate checking account, really.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And then we would just be able to draw the money out of there when we need it, and we want to put it in something that's interest-bearing, so it, we would be earning the interest of the interest that we would have to be paying to hold it.
And you're very confident that that's the case, that...
Yes.
Okay.
Can we pay this off in any time with no penalty or interest?
That is what's in the RFP, is to have no prepayment penalty, and so, um, we will make sure that when we get them back, to make sure the ones that, the ones that we were to select, it makes sure it has a...
You guys want Nick to come up and add on? He knows more than we do.
I was just curious on that, because I know the CRA are in that predicament now.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members, I'm Nick Rocka with PFM Financial Advisors. What we have put in the RFP is that the city prefers to have a no-cost prepayment penalty, and some banks are able to offer that, and some aren't, but at this point, this is just requesting for us to go out for the RFP to get these proposals back, and we'll do that as part of our analysis, there might be, um, some banks that, maybe they only request a 20 basis point penalty fee, but their rate is 20, 30 basis points lower, so it might make sense to go ahead and go with that. And so, while we would prefer to have no prepayment penalty, and some banks are willing to do that, that would be one of the things we analyze after we get the responses.
So they'll basically get paid on the front end or the back end?
Yeah.
And so they're gonna charge us more for that rate?
To have a no...
To have a no penalty?
So...
And what's the chances, percentage-wise, that we would pay it off early? So I think you would have to figure that into it, to make sure it was...
And that's the analysis, we'll sit down with them after we get the bids back.
Yeah, and we'll, we provide a full summary of all the bids, and all the covenants and different terms, uh, once we get the bids back.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'm just gonna ask again, I'm pretty sure I know the answer. The, looking forward in the forecast, the millet rate would drop, this is built in, all the work by ABM is built in, planned out, already.
Further question from council?
And just, just to really, to further, to further support the fact that our public works department is literally invested with rats, and is built on a tennis court pad, and is literally falling apart at the seams, um...
We could condemn it right now.
It's, if, I don't know if anybody, I, I really, I almost think we should do a tour of it for residents to go see, and if you guys never have been there, you can pretty much walk onsite, and you can see pretty much how bad it is. I mean, it's, it's really, it's really bad.
We already condemned it once, same time...
Really?
Yeah, well, there it is.
That's how we got David Schechter center, right? Sorry. Okay, thank you, let me ask... Let me open up for public comment. At this time, is there any public comment on agenda item 11? Podium's open for any.
I just have a question, because I wasn't sure. I don't know, I'm clarifying again. Diane Douglas. So the proposal is just hiring these people to do the 3.6 millions, to find the 3.6 million that is.
The 3.6 to allocate is to do the site plan and build the public works?
That's how she is.
Okay.
The, PFM is a public financial management company, and they're our financial advisors, and we have them under contract. We've had them under contract for about five years now, five years now. And they, they do our, they advise us on our investments, and then they do a lot of our loan products for us. So they're bidding out the, they're, basically, we're seeking a $3.6 million loan, and they're going to send out a proposal, basically a request for proposal to all, a bunch of banks, and then they bid on it, and we, we pick the best one with the best terms, and they provide like a analysis of what's best for us.
Okay.
And then we bring it back to the council. So that's what they do for us.
That's fine. Thank you. I clarify.
Thank you.
Public comment's still open? Here are no further. Back to council. Any further?
No.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item 12, is a proposed agenda for the April 17 meeting. Remember, there is no first of May meeting, so whatever we need to get on here, if there's some time sensitive. Moving on to agenda item 13, appointments to boards.
I'll make a motion to appoint Vicky Hawks to the Samson's Island Working Board with a term ending 4/3/22. Primary member Jennifer Schroeder to the Sustainability Board, term ending 5/4/22. Primary member Susan Savard to the Beautification Board, term ending 5/7/22. And I'd like to also include in this the reappointment of Kay Castro to the Beautification Board with a term ending 6/1/22. And Mary Ann Reese to the Library Board as a reappointment to 6/1/22.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion?
May I ask one question? Were you able to find out any information on Library Board member Hope Asher? She's the Indian Harbor Beach resident who sits on the board and was willing to relinquish her seat, but we weren't sure if it had to be somebody from Indian Harbor Beach.
It doesn't have to be somebody from, it can be a non-resident, so, but we, we're opening up to, if, if anybody wants to apply, if we get applicants to the Library Board.
So is this Mary Ann Reese? That's a different, that's?
This is a reappointment. She's already on the board.
And it said she was the alternate member, so I didn't know if she was stepping up into .
Oh, yeah, to the primary.
The other, so that other seat is still.
There's already a vacant primary member seat.
Okay. Thank you. So we're still open to that other one?
Yes.
Okay.
Further? Okay.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?